So, welcome everyone. This is our annual budget hearing for the 1920 school budget votes. Most everyone here has seen or heard some of these in some of our board meetings that we've been working on since January. So, Mrs. Burdock, if in fact you want us to stop at any point because you have a question, please feel free to do that because...
I'm sorry?
Right. We don't want to move too fast for you, but just about everybody here has heard it. No, it's fine. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we're glad this is on Tuesday for you then.
We're glad that you're here. So, if you want us to stop, just let it stop. Everything is right up there. That's where we're looking. All right? Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. So, the 1920 budget hearing, welcome all of you for being here. This will be available online tomorrow, right? Where will it be, Laura?
I'm not sure where they post it.
So, we'll post it definitely within the business office field, but we may be able to put a link on the front page too, Barb.
Under services.
Under services for the business office, but can we put a link on from the front page? You're not sure you can link to her page?
Well, maybe we can just drop it there.
We'll drop it. We'll see. All right. So, the 1819 school year in review, it's important for us to share with you, I'm going to sit so that I'm not in everybody's way, what we're really, really proud of and what we focused on this past year. So, the year in the highlight with students, community involvement, transportation upgrades are just three of the things that we have to talk about. We've tried to group them. Next slide. The grand opening of the middle school. This was an endeavor that we pushed out in 2013, 14 for all the advantages from an academic perspective. We had noticed some data regression in our students moving from sixth grade on to seventh, which is also an adolescent year, which is difficult for them. And so, there was a lot of conversation even prior to 2013 about conversations of a middle school. There had been a middle school here years prior, and so, we set to work with the capital project of opening up a six, seven, eight on the second floor of the large building on School View, which is typically known as the high school. And then, the downstairs right now is considered the high school. This building is functioning, the building you're sitting in is grades three, four, and five right now. Benefits of participating in athletics. So, again, focusing in our students, our school district does a really good job of keeping our kids busy. More than 60% of our students are participating in some form of athletics at some point. If in fact you add them up for each season, their GPAs, their attendance, their commitment, their family involvement, all we see when we look at the data, and we know this to be true, goes up. And in addition to that as well, as many, many of our students sign on to colleges after high school. And so, for a rural community, it's a masterful endeavor and a wonderful opportunity for our students to be able to be committed, be a part of a team, and then be able to look future toward college too. Our participation rate for each of the seasons, we have 22 teams in the fall, 14 in the winter, 18 in the spring. There was a commitment by the Board of Education, I'm going to say it was somewhere around 2011 or 2012, to keep the number of sports teams that we have, but not to fund every single thing for the teams. And so, our district does not purchase uniforms for our teams. We don't pay for some of their non-league away games. We don't pay for some other participation that the competitions that the students have during the school year. Those were all fundraised throughout the year, and that's how they've been able for all these years to maintain the number of teams that they have. We have approximately 100 students per grade, and so, you can see in the fall that added grades seven, 11, seven through 12, that's five grades, four, five, six grades. If in fact we include most of our seventh graders, we're looking at well over a third of our students at the high school participating. I'm not sure if there was another slide in there, Laura?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the Little Mermaid, we're super proud of what happened with the Little Mermaid. It was an amazing community event. Pretty sure it was close to being sold out every single night that it played, and that was four nights, and had students from grades six through 12, which was also a lot of fun. We don't do the Disney every single year, but when we do, the little ones certainly do come out, and this was a lot of fun and showed off the talent of our students and our community because they made older sets for the most part on their own. Elementary choral band and orchestra, our music competitions, and our students always participate in NISMAs. They go to Old County. Some of our students qualified for Old State this year as well. So, these are our students coming all the way from grades five and on up that you're going to see. Choral performances for Old State, Old County, NISMAs solos for a small school like Eden to have six students audition for NISMAs solos, and then, the youth choir for three students is really quite profound. Band performances as well, a number of our students' solos were five, and our orchestral performances as well. Technology, we're indebted to Lucinda and her department and also to Smart Bonds for helping us to achieve this goal, which was not only in the capital project getting us wired because we certainly couldn't even stream five iPads three years ago, but not just being wired from an infrastructure, but also one-to-one technology. And so, our students do have either at the elementary levels iPads or Chromebooks. Our students in the, help me, Lucinda, grades...
Grades three through nine.
Grades three through nine have Chromebooks. Grades six, seven, and eight and nine can take them home. Next year, grade 10 will be included in that. And all of our older equipment pushed up towards the older grades. And so, this was a huge academic shift for us too because we're not using them as we would a piece of paper. We're really trying to be very strategic in how our students use our Chromebooks or the iPads. Community service, we do a lot of community services. Only two of them listed on this one, but the building of the birdhouses was an awful lot of fun. Kieran Edman said it was one of the most favorite projects that she's done, and it's been in coordination with our Town of Eden Conservation Group. What I saw, an article in the Hamburg Sun, John Hopkins, about the birdhouses that they did in the town, and said, hey, can't we do something like that with the school? So, they just jumped all over that and helped with the kids and came in and worked with the kids. And so, the adults that are standing are actually a part of the Town of Eden, not the school district. So, this would have been with our elementary students, grades three, four, and five. And those bluebird houses are up. They put them up throughout the district because there's only a certain time that the bluebirds will use them, so we couldn't wait. And then, the Thanksgiving food drive and any of the other food drives that we do for the North Collins and Eden Food Pantry is always a really big hit with the kids as well. Reader's Respond Day is coming up on May 31st. It will be a K-12 venture this year, yay! That's been a tough one getting rolling, but PTA has been instrumental, Colleen Gaglion and Marlene Grunder, in getting that rolling for us as well. We did a huge Senator Galvin Warm the Children for Oshai Hospital blanket drive. Eden Elementary and GLP, I think together, collected close to 1,000 blankets if I'm right. It was pretty incredible. And then, the Penny Wars Drive for the students in Africa was something that the students came up with on their own and really took to heart. So, the kids really do like the community service, and we like it for them all too. And then, we couldn't list them all, but we wanted to make sure we did. And if you want to see them all, you can see them all up on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram because we post them all up there. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Now, we're going to talk about transportation upgrades and busing that occurred in the 1819 school year. We were able to use the voter authorized funds from the equipment reserve to replace two large buses and two small buses, and then, we had the addition of a large bus and a Suburban to our fleet this year. The Suburban has been really great. You would think, why are we buying a Suburban to move kids? We have kids that we're tracking from Eden all the way over to Howland School District. That four-wheel drive gives them a safe drive. It's one or two students that are going for special education, and it gives them a safer, more sturdier ride than they would have had in the school bus. So, it was a great addition to our fleet. So, now, it's on to the fun part, budgets. So, our staffing increases, do you want to talk about the new increases?
Yeah, thank you. I'd love to. So, we keep track of new enrollment in the district, and what we're looking for right now is attempting to keep our third grade at what we believe is a good number of students. And so, we are adding a teacher to the third grade that will give us five. When I came in 2013, we were at five in grades K-1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and from 2013 on, we started to slowly reduce it as the enrollment had been dropping, but now, our elementary enrollment is back on the rise. And so, we added a fifth in kindergarten, a fifth in first, then following year, a fifth in second, and now, it's following through for a fifth and third. When I drive around the district and I see the new homes going up, I would not be surprised to see that we have a number of fourth grade students hired next year, and so, I'm keeping an eye on that as well. That third grade teacher comes along with specials, and so, one third grade teacher is actually closer to a teacher in a third by the time you add in the computer, the library, the music, the art, the fifth, the phys ed. We hired a cleaner in the 1819 school year. This building itself only had two. It's a pretty old and a pretty big building, and as any of us that grew up in old farmhouse is, we know how they create their own dirt, but that wasn't in the budget. So, it's not a new person coming in for 1920, it's just getting the money into the budget. And then, we opened up the fitness center as a community outreach through the capital project, and so, that fitness center is free to any of our senior citizens, and it's also free to our students at our staff. And so, that .74 is having two clerks at the desk who sit there every night, Monday through Friday, from I think five to 9:30 or so, and then Saturdays as well in the morning. Part-time increases, a .45 goes along with that third grade special, and then, a .24 clerical staff to try to bring some of the billing over from the special ed department into the business offices. We transition for retirement within special ed and also because it makes sense to us to bring the billing into our business department. That would be with a current staff member as well. The 1920 proposed budget, I'll leave you, Laura. You have a question? Special ed office. So, what we have is we have two secretaries that are in special ed with a special ed director. They do all the Medicaid, they do free and reduced lunch, they do the stacks, and so, we'll start to transition some of that over from that office because what we know during any retirement is that a new person can't possibly do everything that a person who's been here for 20 years has done, and so, we'll try to transition it over to the billing office as well with some training.
All right. So, we're going to talk about, we're starting with the grand totals, $31,353,121. Our revenues have to equal our expenditures. Voters will authorize us to expend that amount of money, but inclusive of that is a 3.85 tax cap compliant levy increase. And we'll get into that a little further later on. What is, what do I mean when I say tax cap compliant? So, we want to look at how are we spending the money that we're budgeting for. 73% of the money is being spent in the program initiative. Program is the things that directly impact the students and their educational learning. 17% is the capital component. That is our debt service or mortgage payments for the current capital project and projects of past where we're paying them off over 15 years. And it's also the buildings and ground staff. And then, there's an administrative component that is the district office, the business office, it's the administrators, and it's the curriculum department. So, that's 10% of the budget. So, I want to go real slow on here, and I want to start with the proposed expenditures. The first line where it says expenditures, that's a classification, what was adopted in 1819, what is proposed for 1920, the dollar change, and then, the percent change. When I talk, I tend to move the dollar and the percent change around, so try not to let it throw you. It's just that sometimes it makes more sense in my brain to talk the percentage and then the dollars. So, general support is everything from the district office, business office, buildings and grounds. That's all of those type of expenditures. There were $4 million last year. They're three point, almost 3.7 this year, 3.6. They're going down $357,000 or 8.83%. The major reason they're going down is the last three years, as a BOSI's component district, they had a capital project, and where taxpayers pick up the local share for a district, component districts pick up the local share for the BOSI. So, our share, we're making our final payment in June of this year, and we won't be doing that in the 1920.
So, let me just jump in on that one for a minute. So, BOSI's Erie Two has four areas that they bring our students to, Ormsby, Hughes, Carrier, and South Shore, right? Gluguitis, thank you. And so, our students are bused to one of those four different BOSIs, and they don't generate their own funds for this. And so, when they do a capital project, each of the component districts, I think there's 27 component districts in the Erie Two, will contribute to that capital project, and that was voted on also in 2015.
Okay. Now, the instructional, that's where we want to see the bulk of our increases because that's the things that are directly related to the students, and that's where people most, are most comfortable with the raises. 15.3 million goes to 15.7 million, $346,000 increase, 2.25%. That's contractual, that includes the addition of the third grade, which is already in these numbers. Then, we have pupil transportation, goes from 2.1 million to 2.18 million, $76,000 increase. That includes things like fuel, insurances, and contractual pay raises. So, that goes up 3.66%. Civic activities. Every year, someone asks me, what is a civic activity? We have what we call facility use. And so, what that means is anyone who provides a proper insurance and is doing it for a reasonably, a reasonable venue can rent the buildings, facility use. But sometimes, they need a technology person to run our equipment, or they need somebody in the kitchen because of health, Department of Health laws, so they hire somebody from the kitchen staff. And our fitness center is also included in that, and the 7.74 of salaries comes out to $17,700. That is the increase, goes from $11,000 to $28,700, $17,700, almost 161% increase, but that's because it's such small numbers that when you add an anomaly like two part-time people, it just increases that exponentially. Employee benefits, that is our workers, yes?
Yeah. I'm a citizen, I'm a former employee, I'm a resident, and policies being implemented. He's quite a native. Is that a common name?
So, is your question, do we keep data on how many people are using it every day? So, I can talk to the director for the facility and see what type of data she has. How many, how many people have signed up? How many people we have paid? I can do that.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Right at the moment, we're not tracking that data because to track the data, this was a promise in the capital project back in 2015. This is the district's fulfillment of that promise, and it's starting off as a slow roll to see, you know, what kind of participation the community wants. So, we have not really started to track it, although the raw data is sitting there, we just simply have not taken and focused on that as a project to look at. Employee benefits, they include your employee retirement system, your teacher retirement and system, your social security, your health insurance, your worker's compensation, and your unemployment. Our unemployment took a huge hit this year as it went from $405 a week, the maximum, went up 6% the same as the unemployment did this year. I can't remember the exact number, but that, that was part of this increase as well. We were kind of blessed that some went down, some went up, and so, averaged out to 2.9%. Debt service is our mortgage payment. I don't know how else to explain it. It's your car loan, it's your mortgage payment. When we go out and we do a project such as the one we're just completing that was voted on in 2015, the public comes out, information is given, what will be local share, what will be state aided, and this number includes both the local share and the state aid share. And because this year, we're completely done with the project, so for 1920, for the first time, all those project costs will be in our biannual payments because in the school district, rather than a monthly mortgage payment, it's biannual. That's just how it's done because of the way the financing is. So, that's going to go up $984,000, a .6%. So, that's what that increase is from as this capital project will go in June to a bonding status. We will now be paying on all of the borrowings, which we have not done up until this point. Then, we have interfund transfers. Interfund transfers includes $100,000, which is utilized for the capital outlay so we can do building repairs, get state aid the following year up to $100,000. And so, we have a capital outlay that we did a public hearing on last board meeting, I believe it was. And so, now, if the voter has authorized this budget, we'll be able to go and do that work, and then, in 2021, we'll get 72% of that money back. Then, we also have in that money, there's a transfer to the school lunch because it loses money every year to give our kids a healthy lunch and keep the price affordable for families. The general fund oftentimes has to support the loss in the school lunch program. And then, about $30,000.
Less than a dollar per lunch. It includes, I don't have that number calculated out, so to give you the number, I can't tell you, I just can tell you that it's a $30,000 aggregated cost. Then, the other thing we support is the summer school program for our handicapped children. Our special education population has a summer school program, and we have to contribute 20% of that cost from the general fund to the special aid fund to pay for special aid summer services for the students who would regress without that assistance in the summertime. So, we go from $30,090,130 up $1,262,991 to $31,353,121 or 4.2% increase. So, where does the money come from? Years ago, in this district, state aid covered 50% of the budget. Now, it covers 39.44%. 47.6% of that comes from property taxes. Reserves are covering 3.94%. Reserves are money that are left over from prior years that are put into a specific savings account for a specific purpose. We have federal aid, that's the special ed students that need medical services. They get those services here at the school because that's where the students are, and we get reimbursed from Medicaid, which is considered federal dollars. Then, we have the interfund transfers, appropriated fund balance. That comes up to 2.42% of the budget. Appropriated fund balance is the amount of money left over in fund balance that we use to lower taxes the following year. Miscellaneous at 6.6%. That includes our share of the sales tax that is shared with districts in Erie County. That also includes the money that we receive for special education students who come from other districts. So, perhaps we have a class, it's a 611 class, and we have three students in it. Our special ed director goes out, goes to neighboring districts and says, I have room for three more students. Does anyone want to send them? We already had a break even of what we're going to spend, and then, they send their students. She charges them accordingly, and that helps raise our miscellaneous revenue. The other thing that we do, it goes right down to a student loses a book and they turn in the money, that's considered miscellaneous. So, now, we'll look at it in the numbers format. Revenues, the categories, what was adopted last year, what's proposed for this year, the dollar change and the percent change. Property taxes, they're slated to go from 14.3 to 14.8 in this budget, $552,000 increase or 3.85. Our calculated property tax cap is 5.9%. This is well under that number. So, our state aid is going from $11.9 million to $12.3 million, $397,000, 3.33%. The majority of that increase comes from what they call expense-driven aids, meaning we spent the money in 1819, they pass back in 1920, and so, we just keep perpetually moving forward. Federal aid, that was for our Medicaid students. It goes from $18,000 to $30,000. We have seen a trend upticking in this number. The budget projections have been low, but they've been stable long enough to raise the expected amount on that. Our students haven't, we haven't lost any high-needs students or anything like that, so it's time to move that up. So, that comes up $11,912. Miscellaneous revenues, again, that's the books, the sales tax, everything we explained before. That goes from $1.9 to $2,108,000 increase, 5.54%. Interfund transfer, there is money in a fund. The accounting for the district is sort of like we're a big company, and we have different businesses on, on paper, and debt service fund is one of those other businesses that we can bring the money back into the general fund. Well, that's money that was left over from a prior capital project. So, perhaps there was $50,000 left, but we didn't have anything we could viably do for $50,000, but we had already bonded, so it goes into debt service fund, and then, you pull it back out to pay for that debt service. So, the board is going to request to bring out $29,000 to help offset the increased payments for our debt service, our mortgage payments. Appropriated fund balance, that has gone from $586,000 to $729,143,420, which is 1% of the levy. So, the board said we can't go out at 4.85, remembering that we can go legally up to 5.9, but they didn't feel that was the correct use of funds. They felt that they should take 1% out of our appropriated fund balance and pledge that in the budget to keep taxes lower. And then, our reserves, in our reserves, we have things like equipment. We're using workers' comp, employee retirement system, unemployment. So, that comes from $1.1 million to $1.2 million. Remember, I said, you can save money legally, but you have to earmark it for a specific purpose, and those are called reserves. So, that's up 4.12%. So, our total revenues, again, $30,090,130 up to $31,353,121 to 4.2% increase so that everything matches and we're at the same point with revenues and expenditures. So, what will you be asked to vote on? Proposition one, you are asked not to vote on the taxes, but to vote on how much we can spend. And so, you will be asked if $31,353,121 is a reasonable increase for this district in the taxpayers' eyes to cover the costs that we need. A 3.85 increase will fund the following. Our increased mortgage payment is 3.18. .67, that covers the third grade classroom and the teachers that do the specials. So, the 3.85 was for, one, the voters authorized this project back in December of 2015, so now, it's time to pay for the project, and then, the board is saying, we, because of that increase, let's keep a minimal increase and let's just cover the third grade costs with that. We'll use reserves, we'll cut other things out that we may have liked to have done programmatically to enhance the education for the students to keep taxes at a reasonable level.
So, a question that I would have if I didn't know already the answer is, how have you been paying for the capital project up to this point?
Up to this point, you go out and you take a one-year loan, it's called a BAN. That's a great question. You pay some of the interest and the principal each year on the BAN, but this will be the first time we're borrowing 100% of the money. So, going forward, we will now have static payments. They will be so much each year will be paid. We will have an amortization schedule, much like you do with your mortgage payments. We will have an amortization schedule, much like you do with your mortgage payment, that we will be working off of then, and we won't see a huge increase in that debt service payment again. There will be, it will be a 13-year bond, because you're only allowed to finance for 15, and I believe, oh, pardon me, this is year three. So it would only go for 12 more years. Because you can, and when you renovate, you can only borrow for 15 years, that's the law. And so even though you had the BAN payments, the one-year loans, that uses up three years of the 15, so we have 12 left that we will be paying. Did that answer your question? Is this budget tax cap compliant? Last year, this was a big concern. And yes, the calculation that was done for this district said 5.9 percent is what the levy could be increased, and still require a simple majority of 50 percent plus one, would still make taxpayers eligible for their property tax relief checks. And that they've been getting since 2016, 2019, '20, will be the last year that has been authorized. So we'll have to wait to see what the legislature does going forward, if they have another relief program or what they decide to do.
The school doesn't have anything to do with that, though?
No, that's correct. That's the legislature. And so what we're waiting for is, in this case, if this budget passes at a 3.85 percent increase, all taxpayers will be eligible to receive that check. Proposition two, should we be able to get a positive vote on this? Transportation costs of $525,905 would be used to purchase eight vehicles for the bus garage. $83,000 would be used for equipment for the maintenance department, for a total of $608,905. So this is a separate proposition, because the money is in a reserve already, that the only way to get it out of the reserve and use it is for the voters to authorize it. This money is under voter control. So where does that money come from? It comes from the equipment reserve, came from savings, it came from prior year's budget. When this budget was developed, we started, it's 18 months before the reality of the budget sets in. So sometimes things go down, sometimes you realize that what you thought you needed, you didn't need. Sometimes you just say, "No, we're not going to do this at this point." And so you have savings. This district is typically 96 percent accurate on their budget. So 96 percent of what we expect to spend is usually what gets spent. That excess money, in turn, gets put into reserves to save for future. It helps to allow us to do things like not tax at 4.85 percent, because we had 1 percent that we could use in appropriated fund balance. So this, when we vote on these buses, it has no taxing pick, because the money has already been saved.
So we're basically just asking to use our money for that?
Correct. It's kind of like when you were a teenager, and you went to your dad, and you would put money in the savings account, and you wanted, you wanted to go out with your friends, and you were out of money. Dad, can I take it out of the savings account? Well, if enough dads voted, yes, you can do that for a bus purchase. Proposition number three.
We can't purchase the buses.
We can't purchase the buses, so.
But we can still, like, we can.
Yes, so we, we have a replacement schedule on our buses, that we started back up again three, maybe three or four years ago. I'm going to say it was in the 15, 16 school year, please don't quote me on that, John, that a third of our buses were taken off the road in one day, during the school day, because the DOT came through and deemed them unsafe. That had been because a number of different reasons. Bus proposition either hadn't gone to the voters, or bus propositions had been voted down, or they didn't have enough buses on the proposition to have an appropriate replacement schedule. So, so you take the number of buses that you have, you divide it by the number of years that you want to replace them in, and that's how many buses you really need to buy in a year. If in fact, Proposition two, which is the bus proposition, goes down, we won't purchase anything that's on here, and we'll just be off our replacement schedule. We do have buses that are currently on the road that I think date back as far as 2005, perhaps 2006. So they're, they're getting pretty far up there.
If this were to go down, where would we got money? Their money stays in the savings account.
It has to stay in that, it has to stay there.
Correct.
Just answer your mark specifically for this purpose.
Correct.
Is there other money in there? Is that, what percentage of that bucket of money, does this 500, $500,000 represent a handful of it?
Probably 45, 48 percent of it. So we've just been trying to put money aside, so that the buses, right now, our replacement cycle that the board would prefer to see would be every seven years.
And we're at nine.
Yeah.
And the replacement schedule is recommended by?
Replacement schedule, well, they, they will give you a recommended replacement schedule, but it all depends on the size of your district. And so we have a really large district, so we put on a number of miles on our buses. No, we do, we do.
So the challenge is to make, to, to give the community the understanding that this is not coming out of their pocket, that that's, that's safe money, it's earmarked for this, and the third part of that is that this isn't necessary.
Well, and you try to get to a replacement cycle that will allow you to get a trade-in value that makes sense. So I drive a 2010 Subaru with 170,000 miles on it. My husband would tell you that it would have been smart for me to trade that in a number of years ago. I know, I just feel the same way. However, had I traded it in a couple of years ago, my replacement value would be higher. So what we take a look at, with the help of, of the state, is good, and Mary Banco from the Transportation Department does, is when's a good time to trade in? Right now, we're doing it at nine. She believes seven makes more sense. This doesn't get us to seven, though.
No. And the other side of it becomes, the longer you keep a bus, the more maintenance costs you have.
And it's not atable.
Correct. Well, it's atable, but you get to a point where there's a tipping point where you don't have enough buses to keep a bus on the road, so now you're keeping more spares. Now you're trying to keep more parts, you're trying to keep more buses going, and it becomes, it comes to a point, if you don't maintain a good, healthy replacement cycle, that you could be running old buses that are prone to break down, students are getting home late, they could be out in the middle of the winter, broke down on the side of the road, because you can only do so much with an old bus.
There was a school day a couple of years ago, some of you might remember, when I said, "We're not having school today, because I don't have a replacement bus to go get the kids if it breaks down," and it was like 10 below, 15 below.
I think people need to understand the district, that this is not, if they broke down, not going to get the budget for the tax.
Correct.
And there's been a lot of newspaper recently about both the cons of this, only the cons, whether or not it's being used. And I think this is something.
They may, they may check no, just because, and not because it's not real.
They're going to think, here's a change that I was having, not realizing where it's coming from, how it's going to happen.
And if they've already, they've already, it's already there.
The money is sitting there, and I can use it for nothing else.
No, I appreciate that.
How many of the board members know that from the newspaper?
Well, I appreciate you pointing that out, and I also appreciate you taking the time to come to understand it. So Proposition number three, we talked about being 96 percent accurate, which means that every year, there should be a little bit extra. So, three years ago, was it, listen to that, smart school bonds came into effect?
Yes.
The voters of New York State authorized a bond act to purchase technology for school districts. We don't have to pay those funds back, it was a gift from New York State. Problem is, we've put one-to-one devices in everyone's hands, because that's what they need educationally, that's how we prepare them for college or career. But how are we going to replace that technology? Are we going to have to raise our budget every year? Over the, after five years, am I going to have to say, "I have to now replace $100,000 of technology, so I have to do a one-year hit to the budget for $100,000"? Or am I going to think about being able to put $20,000 a year into another savings account controlled by the voters? That's the excess money, it goes into that savings account, what's left. The board authorizes whether or not it goes there, the taxpayers say whether or not I can spend it, we can spend it. And again, we could only spend it for technology, so it can't be earmarked or used for something else. To me, this makes sense. This is like, years ago, I knew a young man, he bought a house. His father said to him, "You need to save money aside, in case your furnace breaks," or whatever. This is so that if our technology breaks, we're not in a crisis, we can come to the voters on a routine cycle, and we can say, "Our technology isn't working, we have Chromebooks, wonderful Chromebooks." So how many of you have ever dealt with a five- or a six-year-old? How long do you think that technology is going to last with them carrying it around the classroom? Probably not as long as if I gave it to a 25- or a 30-year-old. So we want to be able to replace it without creating peaks and valleys in the budget for the taxpayers. So we can put our savings, our little bit of extra that we manage to scrawl away each year, so that we don't have to come back to the district and say, "Well, we need to replace those, now what do we do?" We've, we want to come back and say, "Well, we've saved this money, it's time to replace them, please authorize us to spend it on that." So that's the purpose behind this reserve.
Laura, going, kind of going along with what we're talking about with the others and the challenge of it, is that what we'll see on the ballot?
That's exactly the verbiage for the ballot.
Is there a way to make a plain English verb?
No. It has to be the legal document prepared by a lawyer, which is why, you saw, most of my slides were not this busy, but this is the legalese from the lawyer, because that's what we're required to do by education law.
Shoot yourself in the foot.
So Proposition three just establishes the reserve.
Right.
There's no money that's earmarked for it right now.
Right. And we can, over 10 years, we can save up to $5 million for this purpose. That's not to say that at any point in time, you're ever going to see $5 million sitting in this reserve. Because if you're doing that, we're doing something wrong, because we're going to put money in, and as the technology breaks and needs to be replaced, or ages out. Have you ever had a software on your computer at home? Windows 7? They stopped servicing it. Now your computer doesn't work with any of the softwares. Well, we're trying to teach kids the latest and the greatest, so they can move on in careers. We can't give them technology that doesn't keep up. So just like at home, it needs to be replaced. So we're, we're, it would be not a revolving bank account, because once I funded $5 million, that's it, this reserve is done, and alls I can do is spend it. Then I have to ask the taxpayers if we still have a need. Can we do another reserve? But they can.
You're just creating another, a savings account.
Yes, a 10-year savings account.
Because your savings account has to be dedicated to a particular thing.
Right.
I can't use the capital project money here.
One of these happened a number of years ago for the transportation.
Yes.
That you're doing, so we're basically just creating another one of ours.
You have one for Cogen, you have, you have one for Capital Project, you have...
Just from the extra money that we would save through the budget. If we would, another way we could do it is, the board may see fit to do, if, for example, we had outdated technology, we got it all together, we sold it, and what money we received, the board could tell me, that must be earmarked to put in the technology reserve, to replenish it, so that there's money to replace things.
So if you were to take a look at our August board agenda, you would see us starting to fund different reserves with the end-of-the-year money. That's right. We either roll it over to the following year, or we put it in earmarked into different reserves.
Laura, on the, on the ballot, there's been a title, "Passion three, taking this day, now we need to fund, so we have..."
So those ballots are done, we can't, no. So your ballots are printed, your ballots are done, they're done. By law, you can't post anything within 100 feet of the voting site. What our job will be after tonight is to try to push as much information as we can out via social media, via the website, via the paper, but people don't tend to look ahead of time. So it's a challenge for us to try to figure out where to do this.
We have something, yeah, yeah, the, the highest law, just to say, "Passion three."
As long as it's more than 100 feet away from where you vote, I can.
The flyer can explain it.
The flyer, the flyer can explain it. But it should.
Did it explain it?
I think, what it is, what you have said, meaning precise words, people would, okay, Proposition three means this, this is missed. It's not a $5,000 line item.
Well, that's true, because I mean, I've read, it's like reading insurance policy, a hundred people really need insurance policy.
Right.
Tell me when I got paid.
Right, right.
But when that first went up there, the one thing that jumped out of my head is how many, jumped out of my eye.
And what I appreciate, when I get feedback like this, it helps, because, as she just pointed out, yeah, I do read all that stupid insurance policy stuff at home and at work. You'd like me to read it here, but the point being, when I hear from someone else, it gives me a different way of looking at it, because I don't always look at the lens that I had 30 years ago when I was a stay-at-home mom.
But we can't change this.
No.
This comes from our attorney.
Right.
And schools are in a position where we can't look like we're asking you to vote yes. So the attorney tells us what we can or cannot say, including on our flyers, we can't. A Hamburg Sun can word it any way that he chooses to, Buffalo News can, the school itself cannot. We, we sent out a flyer last year that explained things in simple language, we felt. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. We do have a flyer that's gone out with information on it this year, it's probably not as explanatory last year, because it fielded an awful lot of fuel last year or two. But we will certainly try to get that word out to people about what it means.
And I would greatly appreciate, because you've taken the time to learn and understand it, if someone asks you if you could explain it. Because I'm not looking to raise taxes $5 million, I'm looking to save $5 million over 10 years.
Well, with the likelihood that it will never be at $5 million.
No, correct.
Never be.
Correct.
With almost, literally a certainty.
Yes, there, there's no way we'll ever be at this amount, because our technology is not going to last 10 years, and I'm going to say in two years.
And we didn't spend that much on it.
We're going to start using it, because we're going to need it to replace the items that we got for free. You know, it's that old adage, you know, when you get something for free, someday you pay for it. So this is our anticipation of, someday we'll have to replace it. And we want to keep the programs we're able to give to students. We want their educational to stay at a continuum, not up and down with what's going on, that something's old. We want them to never think about that. They're children, their job is to come here and learn. So, you also have to vote for three Board of Education seats. We have two returning members, Marlene Grunder, Don Suffin, and Alan Silver will be a new addition to the board if he's elected, and Paul Shepherd, our current board president, will not be running this year. He will be sadly missed. So, I'm going to ask, because I don't have a question slide, because I like to remind people of when and where to go to vote, are there any other questions? Are there any other concerns, any other things that I can try to help you with? And if I can't answer tonight, that perhaps I can send out tomorrow.
Is there breakdown, specifically, in the poll, watching the news?
Yes. That's in the newsletter that's coming out, and it's also already posted on the website, is it not, Barb? Is it now, Barb?
Hi.
Tomorrow.
I was just saying, I, uh, I'm, uh-
So, we, we can't send the flyer out prior to a certain number of days before the vote, and so, we hold on to the newsletter until after the budget hearing as well. So, that should go out tomorrow. Barb is in charge of that. The, the front page of the newsletter, which is mine, explains those propositions in more simple language, too.
I always anticipated that the, um, initial full-time, uh, the point, whoever was full-time staff was into, uh, for the specials, probably, the existing part-time people.
Yes, we have existing part-time staff that's here, because we don't have a need for them full-time, and so, the music, the art, gym teacher.
It might be a .03 increase for phys ed, a .06-
Right, 40 minutes a day or something.
But it's all current people that are part-time.
Are there, are there, or?
Yeah.
Hires, no.
No, although, we do have new hires due to retirement.
Any other questions? Thank you yet again. I appreciate when you come out, because it helps me to learn how to do this better, so everyone can understand it. So, I appreciate the questions.